Everybody back? Yeah. All right, we'll call the meeting of the City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted.
Bless you.
There's a quorum of the City Council present, and if you will stand over Missouri City Police Department Honor Guard, we'll present our colors and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item three on the agenda is presentation and recognitions, and we don't have any of those tonight. Item four, public comments. We do have people who would like to speak on issues that are not on the agenda. Let me remind everyone that there is a three-minute time limit. I almost, I also need to remind you that we cannot respond to any of your comments. So our first one I have is Bob Bailey. State your name and your address for the record. That thing doesn't stay up very well.
Does it, does it? Okay, I'm sorry. There we go. Will that work?
Yes.
My name's Bob Bailey. I live at 4931 Chapel Hill Drive in Missouri City. I'd like to take a moment to ask the mayor and the council if they would respectfully to consider amending the Missouri City Code of Ordinances regarding section 13.10, sign regulations for conditionally exempt signs, specifically under subsection E, political signs. You'll notice under line item five, it states, "A political sign placed solely for and relating to a public election shall be placed not earlier than the 30th calendar day before the election date." Emphasis added, "election date." I would ask that the council respectfully consider amending that particular sub-paragraph to read the 30th calendar day before the first day of early voting. And I think the reason is evident is elected officials. We're at a point now where a lot of our municipal elections and local elections, where now roughly half the votes cast are done during early voting. And that early voting begins about two weeks before Election Day. So when you subtract that two weeks from 30 days, you're talking just a little over two weeks before the first votes can be cast. So I think we're at a point where it would be useful to all of our citizens in encouraging them to vote in the upcoming election this next year, if you'd be willing to consider amending that particular part of the sign ordinance.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good idea. All right, the next is Noah McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Noah McCall. I live at 13119 Venice Lane in Stafford, Texas, since 1998. I'm here today because I need your help in dealing with an ongoing and worsening problem with Royal Metal Finishing Plant at 13550 South Gessner, Missouri City. The business is directly behind my house on an industrial property. We understand that there's going to be businesses back there. The problem is the type of business that was approved to be operating there. Royal Metal emits toxic fumes out of two 24-inch exhaust vent pipes 12 to 18 hours a day, beginning at 4:00 or 5:00 a.m., 5 to 7 days a week, contains thousands of gallons of highly flammable explosive chemicals, some of which were involved in the West Texas explosion, and is extremely loud, up to 78 decibels, nonstop. It sounds like a jet engine in our backyard, literally. It is too loud to open our windows and patio doors for fresh air in cooler weather, not to mention the fumes that are getting drawn into our AC units outside and getting blown into our homes, which is another concern. It's easy to say it's not a problem. I disagree. Respectfully, I invite you to please visit our backyards and living rooms so you can hear and see firsthand the noise level and dangers we're living with. Now going on 27 months, the owner has a bully mentality, and it all began on day one, when he cut four of my big trees, 18 to 36-inch trunks, when I was at work without permission. Past metal finishing plant explosions here in America and internationally can be seen online at metal finishing plant explosions. Also, you can see all the large open baths of chemicals at Royal Metal and their website, on their website, Royal Metal Finishing Plant, Missouri City. These containers happen to be at the rear of the building, closest to our homes. Why was this type of business, with all the noise, toxic fumes, thousands of gallons of highly flammable explosive chemicals, allowed to operate 60 feet from our sleeping quarters? I ask you respectfully, next time you're at a football game, look at 20 yards on that field. That's how close thousands of gallons of explosive chemicals are to my family's beds. This, that is a total disregard for the safety of the public, whether they are in your zone or not, or on the other side of the city line. Surely, this is a mistake somehow and can be fixed by the company moving to a safer location away from our homes. It is not possible to predict a windstorm event, employee mistake, electrical spark, spill event, or an ignited explosion, which could be catastrophic for many homes and lives. I ask that you please get experts in the chemical plant field to look at the possibilities for an explosion, spill, fire, fumes, or other potential catastrophe. My children, two, I have two at home, 13 and 17 years old, and two older daughters, 23 and 21 years old, at University of Texas, and are concerned and aware and are prepared to position, are positioned to pick up the matter in case we are gone due to a catastrophe event. It's easy to turn your back on us, but I will not give up this matter. I am prepared to go federal, state, Supreme Court level to get this resolved. In the event of the above catastrophes, Missouri City along with Royal Metal Finishing Plant would be held responsible. For your city, approve the location, and also for it is on record that we came here today asking for your help in dealing with this ticking time bomb. Thank you.
Thank you. Jorge Elizonda, is that right? Yes, sir.
I am also a resident-
State your name and address, for the record.
My name is George Elizondo. I live at 13115 Venice Lane here in Stafford. I'll just make it nice and short because my other neighbor was just up here, so I'm going to read you my short statement. I was going to elaborate on it, but he pretty, pretty much hit all the points. My wife and I and my kids have lived here for 27 years. Since the opening of Royal Metal Finishing located at 13550 South Gessner, we have been forced to endure very loud and excessive noise at all hours of the day and night. My neighbors are, and I, are especially concerned for the potentially dangerous situation that this business has put us in. We are very concerned about the use of sulfuric acid and its health risks, especially that close to us. We are in fear that this could become another West Texas in the event of a natural or man-made disaster. This company could potentially wipe us all out. It seems to us that this business is more important to Missouri City than the well-being, health, and rights of its neighbors. We anticipated this property would eventually be sold, but we never thought our lives would be in danger and that our properties would depreciate in value and even make our homes unsellable. This has become a very serious situation for all of us here and especially my household due to the fact that this business sits less than 45 feet directly behind my back door and bedroom. We are now prisoners in our own home, cannot even open our windows on a nice day. I have even gone as far as replacing all the windows and doors to help muffle the noise. But the noise at 77 decibels is unbearable and unstoppable at this level. The inability of both Stafford and Missouri City to help in this matter has caused my family to have to leave our home for peace and quiet at times. We are hoping the City Council and Mayor look into this very serious matter and take our lives into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see, James McNeil.
I had the misfortune of receiving a citation for having put my limbs, cut limbs off a tree in my front yard on the curb. I didn't put it there. I had someone cut it. I had no idea of what, I had, I had no idea, I've had a stroke, excuse me.
That's okay.
I'm seven, nine years old on top of that, so I had no idea that the procedure was, I would get a fine if I didn't have my thing on the curb before 6 o'clock. So the gentleman photographer, who was told in advance who I was or where I lived, he came out, out of all the peoples on trash day to receive a citation. I was the only one. These are photographs of the house next, next to me. I would like, over two diff, uh, two different days that I took those photographs of the house next door to me. His house was in worse condition than mine, and I wondered why wasn't his, he giving a citation? And nor were the other eight people who I talked to, who lived in the, in the next, on Ken Forest, but further down the street. None of those got a citation. So my only thinking was that someone informed the man where to go and what address to give the citation to and to that person only. If I hadn't had a stroke, I would have put those limbs in my backyard myself, but I couldn't go out there and put them back there. I, I received no information as to, I've been living there since nineteen, since 1993, and I'm the homeowner there, and no one has ever told me about after the stroke, Robert. No one has ever told me when or what time to put your trash out. So my neighbor across the street, being the secretary of Honestly and Two, he could have told me, given me some information of some sort, but he gave me nothing or told me nothing. So someone gave them directions to see me, and I don't think I deserved a citation. I paid it though. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I didn't have anyone else. Find out if I missed you, let me know. Otherwise, we'll move to item six. Item six is a consent agenda, is our motion to approve the consent agenda is written. Don't everybody jump up at once? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move, I'll move to a second.
They don't move forward till this. All right, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Item seven is public hearings and related actions. Seven A is a zoning public hearing.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of a 0.9192 acre tract of land from LC3 retail district to R1 single-family residential district. Amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City as adopted by ordinance number O811 on January 19, 1981, as amended, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability, and containing provisions relating to the subject.
This is the first of two readings. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. First of two readings. The applicants are here to request rezoning, one acre tract that has a current non-conforming use and non-conforming structure, which would be a single-family residence. Let me, there we go. Sorry. Okay. As you can see in the site pictures here, there is the existing residence, which was built quite a number of years ago prior to the zoning ordinance coming into effect. At the time of the original zoning ordinance in '81, the site was zoned LC3 retail district. It is across the street from Heaven and Earth, which is zoned LC3. It is south and west of EA Jones Elementary School and west of Missouri City Middle School, which are both within a specific use permit governing those schools. The Fifth Avenue Residential Estate subdivision is across Fifth Street and is zoned R1 single-family residential. The future land use, the future land use map designates this site as community facilities, which would not be in compliance with the existing zoning today, nor would it allow for a single-family residence as it is. It basically requires major things, as far as major public and civic facilities, like schools, government buildings, and cemeteries, and semi-public uses such as churches, clubs, lodges, and other places of assembly, which are typically not included, as they should be situated and designed in accordance with their respective character areas per the land use, I'm sorry, per the future, per the comprehensive plan. Chapter two. This is not in conformance with the future land use map. That's why staff is making a recommendation to rezone it to R1, and in addition, to change the future land use map to reflect that as such. We find that based on its proximity to schools, the roadway network that serves this track, and the other surrounding land uses, that high-intensity commercial or retail district would not be appropriate for at least getting shoppers into those areas, getting them out. Any kind of 18-wheeler or semi-truck traffic would just not, can be conducive to that roadway. So staff does make a recommendation to approve the request, and Planning and Zoning Commission has also made a recommendation to approve the requested zoning change. In addition, inside of y'all's packet, there was a mistake. The 200-foot analysis in the title referenced T-Mobile site, which you all have already heard and made recommend, and made a decision on. So that has been changed. All the background information and map are correct. It was only the title. And the applicants are not here tonight, unfortunately, but if council has any questions, I will do my best to answer.
Move to that. Second. Are there any objections?
No, we have only received one letter of support from the adjacent property-
It was a support, but not an objection.
Correct, only support. In addition, staff would like to let y'all know, too, that we will be working to initiate a city rezoning for that tract, or that small amount of land that on the site plan is denoted as 30-foot right-of-way abandoned, just so that everything in that area is, is pretty much R1. Because really, with that land use there, you would never have a viable commercial business on a 30-foot strip of right-of-way. So in order to clean up the map and to bring conformity to that area, we will be coming back to you all with that.
Very good. Councilman Ellicott, you made your second?
Yes, I did.
And a motion and a second. Is any other discussion? All right, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Item 782.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending regulations in PD Plan Development District Number 66, consisting of a 24.701 acre tract of land, describing said 24.70 acre tract of land, regulating and restricting the development and use of property within such PD Plan Development District, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. As indicated, this is a request to amend PD 66, which contains Spring Creek Barbecue, American First National Bank on Highway 6. It does not include the raceway that's at that corner. This is a request by U.S. Memory Care. They would like to locate a memory care facility, 75 beds, in the area that is generally shown on the aerial map in front of you. It would be on the land off of Colonial Lakes Drive and adjacent to where the Kids or Kids Childcare Facility is located. These are elevations showing what the proposed development would look like. And this is a close-up of the landscape plan. All of this is included in the packets. I've kind of highlighted the areas that would deviate from the standards that are noted on the cover memo and in the staff report. And just very quickly, based on this layout, it would be a reduction in the rear yard setback. And, let's see, also a reduction in the transitional buffer yard, and that's that whole area that's outlined in red, that would be adjacent to Colonial Lakes Drive. Staff is recommending approval. PNZ recommended approval, because if you look at the area towards the top of the screen, that's adjacent to Kids or Kids, there's an enhanced buffer on that side. Also, the site plan shows, and it's in the dotted area in green, the deviation referencing no parking space, no more than, the recommendation is no more than 50 feet away from a planning island or diamond. The deviations also, and I'm going to skip back to the elevations, between the elevations and the landscape plan, also include a request to allow for the use of fiber cement board, commonly known as hardy plank. It would not be visible to the general public. It would be inside the interior courtyards of the building. There would be three buildings, and I'll let the applicant who's here kind of describe what their overall design is for this type of facilities, but there would be three buildings that would compose this facility, and within the internal courtyard, they are requesting to use fiber cement board. Also, they are requesting, requesting for the visible roofing that you see on the pitched elements, the use of composition shingles as roofing material. And there is a positive recommendation for the use and for all of those deviations as indicated.
But it's a fencing requirement on-
On which side?
All sides.
There, there's not a masonry fencing requirement because they're completely surrounded by commercial uses.
No, on the premise, what kind of fencing is required for this facility? Memory care facilities have a reputation of their clients wandering away from their facility. I want to know how they're going to protect that.
And the applicant can address it, because the city regulations do not require fencing. And so I'll let the applicant discuss what their, their, how they'll secure. Yeah, I'll let him discuss that. But the applicant is here to answer any questions, any other questions.
Very good. Let's have the applicants.
My name is Steve Belli. I'm Vice President of Development for U.S. Memory Care. We, our office in Dallas, Texas, at 1481 Quorum Drive, Suite 200. Maybe to give you a little background on the facility itself and who we are, U.S. Memory Care is a company that was formed in March of 2011. It's part of another company called America Development. We are healthcare investment and development, we're a healthcare investment and development company. We got into the senior housing memory care business in March of 2011 after studying senior housing as a whole, and decided that the assisted living, the independent living side of the market wasn't something that particularly matched up with our expertise, but the memory care side did. And so what we've done is we've developed a prototype facility. This will be my second facility, hopefully, in, in the greater Houston metropolitan area. These are 75-bed facilities, plus or minus 60,000 feet, sit on four, four and a half acres of land. They are broken up into three neighborhoods that Jennifer mentioned. Our theory and our model, based upon our research, is that when, when you look at most memory care facilities, what you see is a grouping of the residents, regardless of where they are and the stage of their disease. So what we do is we broke our, our facilities down into three neighborhoods. So neighborhood one, if you will, would be for your early-stage Alzheimer's or dementia patients. The middle neighborhood would be for your middle stages. Then, stage three, which is more of a clinical environment, is obviously for the late-stage patients, as well as in more of an end-of-life type scenario. These facilities are, or our facilities are different in that from, once you walk in through the administrative area into what we call Main Street, which then feeds into the neighborhoods, everything is completely locked down. There are no doors within this facility that are not regulated or have some sort of monitoring device for the security of the residents.
About the exterior fence is what, what I'm concerned about. Once they're outside.
Well, they are not allowed, they cannot get outside.
They can go outside for no reason. No yard, no anything.
The only outside, the only outside area of these facilities are in the internal courtyards that Jennifer was mentioning, which are, which, you do have access from within the neighborhoods themselves, but there is no access to any of the exterior points in this facility.
Let me ask a few questions. So how many, how many building is this? This is one building or three different?
One, one building.
One, and you said, how many bed?
75. It'll take care of 75 residents.
75 residents. So.
Is it 25 each?
25 in each neighborhood. Yes, sir.
I don't follow that 25 each in neighborhood.
Well, the way he's got the building designed, it's in three different areas. They call them neighborhoods, but it's just three different areas of the building. You've got stage one, stage two, and stage three, which is 25 beds in each of those stages, but it's all under a single roof, is what you're saying.
That's correct. And if, if I could, let me, let me maybe briefly give you the overview of the facility. So, and I'm not sure if this is the best slide to look at, but basically, our facility will, when you walk into it, will have an administrative marketing area, okay, which is right off the porticochee when you walk into the, the building. That is, that is where there is some public access. Now, there's a door that feeds into a main street area. And what's, what's unique about our facility is when we decided to get into this, we spent a lot of time and effort with our architectural team, traveling all over Texas, doing research on the evolution of main streets, okay? So what you will see in our facility, when you walk past the administrative area, is basically a recreation of an old Texas main street, okay? And with, you know, a, a sweet shop, with a salon, with a, with a, with a city hall, with an inn, okay? And these aren't, for lack of a better word, these aren't, these aren't Mickey Mouse sort of rooms with a sort of a facade. You know, these are 30-foot clear spaces. These are functional rooms, which allows us to bring our residents into this area in a controlled way, okay, and provide a higher level of care, and, you know, with higher level of activities and with overall monitoring. You know, to go to the security issue, one of the reasons why we decided to do a 75-bed model, as opposed to some of the ones you may have seen, which typically, you know, typically you see a blended facility with AL and ALZ, okay? And some of the groups that do a dedicated facility do a much smaller version of this. What we found is that, you know, if we, fortunately, unfortunately, the need is there, okay? The demand, unfortunately, is there, and it's a problem that's getting worse. And we, we decided that by going to a bigger facility, we could provide better staffing ratios to the residents, we could, we could provide more area per resident than what you see in most of these facilities. And therefore, that translates to a, to a higher level of care, and frankly, a better quality of life for the resident.
Can you just talk about your residence and incense that the capacity of it, you feel like you will, you will have 75? Completely full? Now, just describe to me how the day-to-day operation of this is. How does this work?
How does?
How does your residents, are they supposedly the fact that they're in there, so they need to be cared?
Right, right. But there's all different levels of care within a, within a memory care facility. So going back to where we started. So, so your first neighborhood, our first stage, which we would say would be your early-stage Alzheimer's or dementia, okay? So these are residents that, you know, may have some memory issues, still very functional, okay? Can take care of themselves. In Neighborhood 1, for instance, all the rooms will have bathrooms and showers, okay? So that section of the building, those are people that are still, cognitively still have a lot of ability to function normally, okay? In the middle sections, you know, that's where you start seeing people who need, you know, maybe assistance with eating or assistance with bathing, clothing, just daily, daily needs. But still have the ability to communicate, you know, on a variety of different levels, okay? And the late-stage group, our Area 3, Neighborhood 3, none of those rooms will have any bathrooms. I mean, the bathrooms have no showers, okay? And these unfortunately are the people who need assistance with pretty much all of the normal daily functions that you would see. And these are people that, as we said, are at the late stages of the disease. You know, it's more of an end-of-life clinical environment, unfortunately. So there's a lot more, from a staffing standpoint, there'll be a lot more attention paid to the third neighborhood than there would be in the, in the middle or the first.
How do you, how do you control access between the different neighborhoods? In other words, to assure, if this is an appropriate question, to assure that those in Neighborhood 1 don't migrate or be able to move into Number 2, you know, unobserved or, you know?
You know what? I had some handouts. If, can you excuse me for two seconds? Could let me... I'm sorry, I'm not really the best with these pointers, but...
Well, that's being circulated. What kind of staffing are you going to have? I mean, obviously, you've got different levels of different care. So tell me what your...
Right now, we're projecting one caregiver for five residents.
How about medical staff?
We have on, we have full, you know, we have nursing staffs, you know, of course, that oversee the level of the care within the facility. Because of our healthcare background, what we've been able to do is we've set up, I guess, a visiting physicians program. We don't administer care, as you would, like in a rehab hospital or that type of environment. But, so what we've done is we've used our resources and our relationships to reach out to the physician community, because... So one of the things that we're able to do with these facilities, we'll, we'll provide, you know, on a once-a-week basis, or, you know, depending on what the need is, we'll have a visiting physician come in, and there will be exam rooms. And the reason for that is, you know, a lot of time, the family member who has the resident in the facility, for them to come, take the resident out of the facility, take them to their doctor, then bring them back, creates a lot of anxiety. So one of the things we do is just say, okay, we'll bring the physicians in. We don't, we don't, it's not billed through us. It's something that's worked out between the family member and the physicians. But it's an amenity to the, you know, or it's a service to the family. So that's how, you know, we will handle the medical care side of this. But maybe to get to your question, if you're kind of looking at the, kind of the plan...
Each has their own dining area?
Yes.
Separately in its house?
Yes, in each neighborhood, we have what we call a country kitchen, which is a good-sized room where all the meals are brought from the back of the house. You know, we have a full kitchen in the back. All the meals are brought up through the, through the facility. And then each neighborhood has its own dining room, okay? And again, the reason for that is you don't want to have, you know, kind of a late-stage resident next to an, you know, to, you know, you want, you, we feel very strongly that breaking the community down into these different areas lowers the stress levels, lowers the anxiety, gives a better quality of life, and allows us to program activities, okay, that are, that are appropriate for, for the various areas. But to get to your question, each neighborhood, when you, when you walk in through the facility, so the first door you enter, after you walk in through to the administrative area into Main Street, is a lockdown door. So no resident can get from Main Street to the, to the administrative areas, which is not what you typically see, you know, in some of these communities. And then each door, okay, so each neighborhood has its own door that feeds into, into the Main Street area. Each one of those doors are locked down. So to answer your question, how do you control, you know, people getting into Main Street unsupervised or whatever? There's, they cannot get into there. They have to, and they're brought down in different periods at different times of the day.
On something like this, I mean, I just saw your three houses. It looks pretty, pretty big, almost size of a 100-bed type of hospital. I guess the question I have is what type of visitors that you're expecting? Or ambulances, that you're taking these folks to hospitals or wherever it needs to?
You do have hospital, I mean, you do have ambulances, because obviously, you're dealing, especially with some of your Neighborhood 3 individuals. So you are dealing with end-of-life scenarios. From a visitor's standpoint, you know, it's mostly what we see coming to the facility. I mean, obviously, you have your community leaders. You know, our, our facilities are very community-oriented. So you have your community leaders, you have marketing representatives. Of course, you have some vendors, okay? That'll come pretty much to the front. Around the back, you have your food service delivery, laundry service, those types of things. And in terms of the residents, you have the family members, okay? But...
What are their hours? Like, are they, can they come?
Our facilities are open 24/7.
24/7?
24/7. We do not feel like, you hear so many times of people, you know, there's an obvious anxiety level with the family member who has a resident in one of these facilities. And they want to know that their loved one is being taken care of. And we, so we said from the beginning, we opened our first facility in Colleyville and licensed it through the state of Texas. We said, you have your mother, grandfather, whomever in our facility, you can pick up the phone 24/7, call us, and...
I know, I know. But my question was, you know, typical, I work at a hospital, so that's why I'm asking this. We have visitation hours. And from, what you're saying is they have, pretty much, they can come and go anytime they want to go. So do they stay overnight? Do the family members?
No, no. We just, we just, we, I mean, typically, what we've seen is that the family members come, you know, probably around 10. You know, 10 to 4, somewhere in that time, 10 to 5. You know, is when you kind of see the most activity from the family members. Unfortunately, you see a decline in the number of visits by the family member for the reasons that we all would know, because the resident...
They don't know who they are.
They don't know who they are.
Yeah. So, but do you have, I guess, what I'm asking is, do you have some type of policy that shows that your visitation hours, even including for family members, are from, you know, time A to time B?
You know, I, I am not on as much on the operations side of these, but I, you know, I do know that if someone were to call and they wanted to come, we do not restrict that. I would, my gut would tell me that, that most of the family members are there. You know, anytime after breakfast, 8:30, 9 o'clock. You know, when I've been to the facilities, lunchtime seems to be, you know, a very active time. You know, yesterday, I was at the Colleyville facility, you know, and so they were, you know, it's sort of the end of the day, and there were a lot of children and, and family members in the first neighborhood.
If I may ask one more thing, I see that you have activities here. What type of activity are you, is it all day, or is it?
It's programmed.
It is programmed.
It's programmed, uh-huh. And that depends upon the, what the Activities Director is doing. I mean, one of the things that we do, you know, I mentioned the Town Hall. Well, the Town Hall is really a recreation of a old city movie theater, okay? So, you know, I mean, we have, you know, movie posters that go back from the 50s and 60s, all on the perimeter of that thing. You know, this room will seat probably 25 people, okay? And we have movie nights. One of our residents, when we first opened Colleyville, was a big Texas Ranger fan. Well, when we were still, you know, after we were going through the licensing period, you know, we put the Ranger games on for him, and he'd feel like he was out at Arlington Stadium. You know, there's arts and crafts. There's, you know, a little bit of physical exercise. What I'm finding out is a lot of the residents like to bowl. So we got plastic, our Main Street's so long, we got plastic pins, and we have a bowling tournament, you know? So, I mean, it just, I think it really just depends on what the Executive Director and the Marketing Director and Activities Director feel like is appropriate for the community.
If you're traveling down Colonial...
Colonial Lakes, yeah.
Colonial Lakes Drive, what do you see after it's erected? What will we see?
If you're, if you're coming off of Highway 6?
Just traveling down.
Going to the north, I guess?
Well, between, it'd be between Highway 6 and Colonial and to Cartwright.
Jennifer, when you, okay, I want it to be expressed. Jennifer, when you're traveling down Colonial Lake Drive, what do you see as far as the, this? You see the exterior, you see this building here?
You'll see the, the elevation on the top. That's the elevation that'll front Colonial Lakes Drive.
Okay. If you're coming down Texas State Highway 6, what will you, what will you see?
You'll come up, you'll still see that landscape buffer. It'll be a little slimmer than other developments. But for the most part, you'll still see the building elevation and landscaping coming up from Highway 6.
And to the north of the extended north, what subdivision is that up there?
The only subdivision, subdivision is Oyster Creek Plantation. That's going to be where the arrow...
So it's nothing really at this point?
No, there's, yes, Kids or Kids Daycare on that side.
Yeah, residential.
Yeah, residential is just Oyster Creek Plantation on the east side.
Uncle Bob's Warehouse right there, and then these are office buildings.
So if I could just ask Jennifer a question, then I do have a couple of questions for you. When I look at this picture, it seems incomplete. Aren't there some other zoning classifications that we have given here recently?
Yes.
Okay, and what are those?
You have two planned development districts that were approved on Cartwright. And let me see if I can...
And not just what are, but what are, what are the uses that we approve?
Right. Right here where the arrow is showing, this is Uncle Bob's storage here. This is Colonial Lakes Office Park. So the area that's showing is vacant, right there on Cartwright Road. There was a planned development district approved for forebend family promise. That was late last year. There was also a planned development district that was approved right adjacent to it for an assisted-living facility.
Assisted living, or was that?
It was assisted living.
Specifically assisted living?
Yes.
Not memory care?
No, assisted living.
Sure, okay. Now, the question I have for you, are you for profit or not for profit?
We're for profit.
That's good, because I'm not interested in taking any property off the tax roll. Just kidding. But that, that's, that's a good, good, good point. And you're licensed by?
The Texas Department of Aging and Disability Services. It's your final...
The Texas Department of Health, okay.
Will your, will your clients have any form of semi-permanent identification? Owned them? I get back to this, guys. I just, I read too many horror stories, and I've seen too many cases where Alzheimer's patients do wander away, have no ID on them whatsoever. I've had some very close contacts with people who've done that, who I thought probably needed to have impregnated IDs put in them so that hospitals would know who they are. I mean, we hear about this all the time. And I keep saying, why don't these facilities require these people to wear some type of bracelet or a necklace or something that if they were to get out? And let's say that their loved one came and got them and took them shopping, and they wandered off. That's not your responsibility. But our police department then is trying to find out who these people are. And we read about it almost every day. So what are we doing to protect those people?
Well, you know, again, you know, I think because of how we're going to staff the facility, that we will have a caregiver for less number of people, number one.
Outside of that, you know, don't think that. Come back. What are you doing as a industry, let's say? Let's say what you're doing as an industry. What would you do uniquely in your facility for your clients that says, you know what, we want our clients to be as safe as they can? And one of the benefits that they have of being in our facility is that we're going to furnish them with an ID bracelet.
Well, we do look at those types of things. And there are some issues that are involved with the braces in terms of the residents taking them off, whatever, okay? So, and that is something that we look at. So that is one side of it. The other side of it is the, is the completely secure nature of our facility, which frankly, we found was, to your point, which is what we didn't see, which I think contributes to that issue of a resident getting out of the, you know, getting out of your facility. I can't stand here and say that you're never going to have that happen. What I can say is that at every point of ingress, ingress to this facility, there are monitoring systems, there are delayed, you know, there's delayed because of the music through the fire department, you know, there are... A resident goes up against a door, it won't open for, you know, the alarms go off, there's a 30-second delay on it, those types of things. You know, the fact that we don't allow our residents to get anywhere into a public area, I think is, is unique. And I, and, you know, you know, we're doing everything we can to create an environment that is safe, that is caring, and that improves the quality of life for these people.
And at that reception desk, it's manned 24 hours a day, 7 days a week.
There's 24/7, there's 3 rotations of staff, 55 full-time employees, once we get to stabilized occupancy.
What does the state require that you do? In terms of identification, recognition, maintenance of the facility?
A lot of the times, the state's recommendations have to do with the perimeters of your, of your building, how your access doors, you know, the delayed response in the, in some of those doors. For instance, the fire safety issues of the, of the building. Yeah, how you're getting your residents to, you know, should a fire occur, that type of thing? How do you get them to a safe area? And all of that is very, you know, it's, you know, the state is very strict as far as how, how you go about that. And as a matter of fact, one of the things we did when we got into this is we hired a dad's consultant, if you will, out of Austin, Texas. So he's with us every step of the way during construction, during licensing, during inspections, all of those types of things to make sure that we're doing everything possible as it relates to the state's requirements.
So do y'all do Medicare reimbursement?
Right now, we do not do. There's, there's very little Medicare in memory care right now. There is some VA benefits, and you see some long-term care insurance, which is still very expensive. So for the most part, our facilities are private pay.
What is your staff-to-patient ratio?
1 to 5.
And does that drop down at night?
At occupancy, at...
Yeah, does that drop down at night, or does, is it 1 to 5, 24?
No, there's 3 rotating, there's 3 shifts.
Okay, so it's consistent 1 to 5, okay.
And it's based upon the occupancy and where we are. But, you know, it projected stabilization, we project 92%. So that's how I can, you know, we, you know, each facility at stabilization will bring about 55 jobs.
Were all requirements made, Jennifer, with contacting neighboring residents?
Yes, and in addition, this is a PD where they also had to send notification to the other property owners within the PD. And so they did satisfy that requirement, and then all notifications were sent. We sent it out 250 feet from the site. And so that did extend to some of the residential properties.
Did y'all help me build a market study?
Yes. Oh, yes, we've been working on this site for over a year.
So what was the outcome, what's the demand? What's the demand?
Real, well-
And I wanna ask you that because you're asking for a special zoning.
Right.
I'm explaining to you why I asked.
And let me, yeah. What we do, just because you have to run some sort of demographic profile on the area, we run basically a 10-mile radius from the location. Okay? So, based upon statistics from the National Alzheimer's Association, looking at population, demographics, incomes, all those sorts of things, you know, we project right now within a 10-mile radius of the site in need of anywhere from 450 to 900 beds. Okay? Now, what is, we are finding, okay? And, and Collville's the only one I can give you an example on. Okay? We have been licensed for 75 days, fully licensed, where, you know, you go through a two-step licensing process. We've been fully licensed now for 75, 80 days. We have 25 residents in our facility. We were projecting four a month. Okay? So, you can see kind of what the demand is. I can tell you that of the 25 residents that I have in our facility right now, probably about 30% of them or so come within that 10-mile radius. Okay? Another 30 or so percent come from the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex area. Okay? The rest of them, I have two residents from California, I have a resident from St. Louis, I have a resident from Chicago, I got two from Oklahoma City. So, what that's telling us is that, you know, so what, so what we're starting to see is, you know, you don't only have to look at the age, the population, okay, of the age in the area, now where you're having to take a step back and you look at the family members, okay? Because what you're seeing, especially in Texas, because there's so much growth going on across the state right now, you know, a lot of people moving in here, is that a lot of the people moving in, you know, they might have their grandfather or mother, whomever, living in Chicago, they live here in Missouri City, they wanna bring her down because they want her close to, close to home. So, it's really hard, you know, you have to run some model to get some idea of the demand. But what we're seeing is a lot of our demand, as much of our demand is coming from outside of the radiuses that we run or the drive times that we run. And it's coming from, you know, all over the state or outside of the state. We take a very conservative approach to, to our market studies. These are not insignificant investments for us. I mean, this is about a $15.5 million investment. Okay? So, we do not, so we, we study the demographics very hard. And like I said, I've been working on this site for over a year now.
So, is the, so is the plan to build all three neighborhoods, as you call it, at the same time?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. This, from start to finish, it's about a 12, 11 to 12-month construction project and about another 90 to 120 days to get licensed through the state.
Does the state come back out to you and, and do some type of inspections yearly?
Uh-huh.
For you all?
Yeah, they'll come back. The nice thing about, from where we'll be hopefully on this deal, is that the dad's region, okay, for this area, we will have already gone through this process on our project in the vintage at Lewetta and Cutton up north. So, we'll have a pretty good idea of how this area, how the, how the agents of the state work down here and what becomes particular to them. What we find is that regardless of what the rules are, they kind of go by their own codes and they, they kind of, you know, they dictate kind of how they want these facilities to be built and operated.
I have a, I have a side question for Scott Umer. You know, in looking at this picture, this, it looks like their entrance is right at the break of the entrance to Oyster Creek Plantation. Now, coming down to Highway 6 and then going to, going towards YMCA, right now already that you have those left lanes are, do take about two lights before you can turn if you have about four cars. So, is there anything in here along with that improvement or lane adjustments or anything like that for traffic-wise? I'm just asking.
If I understand your question correctly, if you're going northbound on Colonial Lakes towards Cartwright Road, the left-turn lane takes a couple cycles before it-
Yes, it does.
-clear.
And it's even, right, and it's even worse when you're going towards Highway 6.
Even, so that would be the left turn?
Because you have, yeah, especially at the evening hours, because you have parents from, you have YMCA traffic and then plus from Kids Are Kids. And then you have the residents that's coming out of Oyster Creek Plant, yeah, Oyster Creek Plantation, trying to get to Highway 6. Now, I'm just thinking, because now you got the hotel, when that's built. So, I just wanted to see, I guess, ask you, is there any plan for any, anything in there that's to widen it?
Definitely something we can look at, signal timing on both those intersections and see how it, what we can do to add to the left turn without taking away from progression on either Cartwright or 6. The applicant, of course, this is a zoning application, and as we go through the construction process, we would take a look at expected trip generation and applicant would do a letter report on that. And our standard would be, would be for him to include a signal timing analysis at both of the adjacent intersections because they're within the distance requirements on that. But that is definitely something we can look at.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Councilman Emery made the motion, is there a second? Is there a second? If there's no second, then it dies for the lack of second. No second, all right. Motion was denied. All right. Head M3, head 7A3.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of 4.8454 acres of land from LC3 Retail District to PD Plan Development District, regulating and restricting the development and use of property within such plant, PD Plan Development District, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
This also is the first of two readings.
This is, this is a request, this is, the area shown on the aerial in front of you, it's behind Murphy Express, behind the post office off of Glen Lakes, the Midtown Market Shopping Center. It's shaped kind of as what we call a flag lot with minimal frontage on Highway 6. The applicant is proposing to locate a mini-storage, self-storage facility on the location. These are exterior elevations, it would consist of four buildings. The buildings would be constructed in phases. I'll allow the applicant to elaborate on the type of storage facility that they're proposing. This is a site layout, and I don't know if you can really make out the buildings clearly, but the four buildings are shown on this site layout. Murphy Gas Station, Highway 6 is shown over to the right-hand side, and then the facility goes back from there. It is buffered from residential areas by a wetlands area to the rear of the site. And that's kind of indicated where you see the little jagged edges on the left side of the screen. The deviations that are requested, this is a PD because, as you know, mini warehouses, mini-storage is permitted as a use by right in the LC4 Retail District. This district is LC3 presently. And in order to allow for the mini-storage use and not the expansive uses of an LC4 district, staff has recommended that the applicant seek a PD, which is the application that's before you. The deviations, in addition to the use, that are required for this type of use and based on what's been submitted, is the removal of the requirement for a visible pitch roof. Staff and planning and zoning has forwarded a positive recommendation for that just based on the location and the layout of the buildings and the lack of visibility from a public view for that type of design. Need to clarify the use of the insulated metal panels. The applicant has indicated that they no longer intend to use that type of material. Their architect and their general contractor have come to the conclusion that the use of stucco would be a better product. And part of what they're looking at, and this is in regards to Building D, which is gonna be the closest to the wetlands designated area, so they're looking at a material to insulate the building and that would be maintained over time. And so, they've determined that the use of stucco would be a better product for them. And so, they no longer are requesting to use these insulated metal panels that were presented to P&amp;Z, but the deviation would be to allow for stucco to be used as a primary material for the Building D and not have the brick-stone architectural masonry unit percentages for that building. And again, this building is all the way to the rear of the site, the visibility of it would be minimal, if any, from, public view from Highway 6. So, staff is recommending approval for that. The applicant is here to address any specific questions.
Jennifer, I do have some questions for you, though.
Uh-huh.
I know that this was reached out to the HOA and there was a meeting that was canceled. I know the mayor knew about it. I have not, I've only seen these plans. So, when you say further back into, I'm looking at the ortho map, when you say further back into the wetlands, how far, where is it?
You mean the building location?
Yeah, I mean, so there, so is this the driveway between the, the gas station and the 15, oh, what is it, 159-Diner? Old 159-Diner? So, is that the same driveway that extends to this?
That is, that is. And that entire driveway is on their property or on the parcel. That's the subject of the rezoning. And so, it's shared access for the shopping center. It was all part of the Midtown Market development. And so, it's a shared driveway for the shopping center, for Murphy Express Gas Station, and then it would be for this site as well.
And how many units?
How many storage units?
How many storage units, yeah.
I'll let the applicant, they have the square footage indicated on, on the plan, but I'll let them go into detail about their, the storage model.
Well, we need to get a motion before the applicant-
That's your motion. Robert, that's your motion.
Yes.
So, we can have a discussion.
Second. Can we, and Mr. Turner, why, can you, can you better describe the location? I mean, I know where it is.
Yes, sir.
But then I, I have some concern, probably similar to Councilman Ellicott, the drive behind the center, what happens to it even though it's on that reserve's property? And we're not building anything between that center and the post office and Glen Lakes, the frontage.
That's correct. What I wanna also do is just, if you don't mind, first introduce the players that are here as well. I do have George McCants with Yellowstone Investment and Paul as well back there in the back. And so, we'll try to answer any questions, we will answer any questions that you may have before us. My name is Lawrence Turner and I'm with Kelly Collusion Associates, working with Yellowstone Investment. The Murphy Road Express Gas Station, which is very visible from the State Highway 6, there's a driveway that gives you access to it. That is a common shared driveway that would be utilized for this project. This project is located directly behind the Murphy, the Murphy Gas Station. And so, it's behind the Murphy Gas Station, it's to the south, and it's to the south of the post office, post office, US Post Office. It's just that subject site that Jennifer's kind of highlighting right there. There's a cell tower back there in the very back that will be adjacent to our property site as well. It is also the wetland area that she's referring to right there. It's about 200 feet wide with heavy vegetation, trees, and, and things along that nature that are between our project site and the adjoining land home, landowners, homeowners. There's also a roadway, Belmont Shore Lanes, which also separates us from the subdivision over there. I will tell you that we did meet with the Colony, the Water's Edge at Colony Lakes HOA. Our first meeting was two months ago. They, and as you all know, some homeowners association, they don't meet, sometimes they don't have a forum or enough people to meet. So, they did meet, so we asked to be put on their next agenda. We did meet with them Monday, this Monday before last, we met with them, had a very favorable response because we wanted to be proactive and meet with the community. We thought that was the right thing to do. Even though they're not within the 200-feet buffer, we know that we need to make sure that those that were, even though they wouldn't see it or it would affect them, but at least they'll know what's going on so we can squash any, anything, the unknown. Because if you know what's going on, then you're better educated and you can make better-informed and intelligent decisions. This particular site right here that we're talking about, the approximate four-acre site, is behind the Murphy Oil Gas Station. We're proposing on putting in four buildings. The first building, Building A, which you can see on that site plan, is approximately 55,200 square feet. It's a two-story climate-controlled unit. And we'll also have next to it as well, a 9,000-square-foot, one-story building that will be adjacent to it. Those two buildings will be part of Phase 1. And then at the later date, we'll basically just kind of mirror that footprint that you see over, and that would be for Phase 2 right there. We do have water and sewer and drainage available to us for this site. So, all the infrastructure that needs to be, that is needed for the site, we do have access to those infrastructure. We've also done the TIA and we've submitted that information along with our permit to staff, and they've had their opportunity to, to review that information as well. We felt like this is a very desirable spot for this type of product. And I will basically enter, answer and entertain any of your questions that you may would have with regards to the infrastructure, the site, how it sits, those type of questions. Any questions that you may have with regards to the number of units or the operations, I'm gonna turn those over to George and I'll just step onto the side. If you all noticed, I got somebody just as tall as me this evening here to, to stand by my side over here.
All the units accessible from the outside rather than the inside? All the units look like they're accessible from the outside rather than the inside?
Both.
Both?
Both. We have two different types of buildings there. The, Jennifer, is there a way to get to the front picture?
Well, I isolated these. Let me, I'll have to pull up.
Okay, that's all right. We're not looking at the front of the building in the picture that we're looking at now. This is actually the side of the rear building in the project. The front one, which is the one that will be most visible onto Highway 6 and to the public and all, is, looks very different than what we're seeing here. And luck for y'all to be able to see that. But the two-story buildings are entire interior access. They are accessed from, you see the covered canopy there? Those are, there are two of those on the back of each building. And underneath each of those canopies is an entrance into that two-story building.
Okay.
Okay? The other one-story buildings do have some drive-in units, but they also have interior units.
The two-story, are there units on the second floor?
Yes.
Is that the building further in the back?
There are two two-story buildings. One is the front building behind the Murphy Station, which we're working to get a photo of for you. And then the second two-story building is at the back. And we did that because on the site plan that we were looking at, it's possible to nestle that building back into the trees without taking down any trees. And so, we did that so there'd be just as little view of that building as possible there in the rear. So, one two-story building all the way at the front, one two-story building at the rear.
No outside storage?
No outside storage. No vehicles, RVs, boats?
I don't get to keep a boat down.
None whatsoever.
The Building A that he's referring to is the building, if you look right there-
The Building A that he's referring to is the building, if you look right there, she's plowing it right there. That's the two-story building right there. That's closest will be right behind the Murphy Oil Gas Station right there. And then adjacent to the two-story will be the one-story, which she's kind of highlighting right there. That's the 9,000 square foot building.
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, yeah, one of the, the things when you look at, you've got some roll-up access into, I guess, a smaller building, the one-story?
Correct.
And I guess the question is, what type of, of clients would you see using that? You know, is there some control over ensuring that we don't have, and I have nothing against lawn maintenance people, but, you know, would, would that, that type of an operation be something that, that would be used here or they would use this, this particular rental unit?
The short answer is no. And the reason for that is, is this is a storage project that falls into what is called the luxury category. For example, on the inside of the climate-controlled buildings, there are carpeted units. There are also extra security devices, things that are far beyond what the normal storage project has. If any of you all are familiar with the first Colony Storage on Lexington behind the mall, that is very much the character of what this project will be on the inside of it and how it's arranged. The, in terms of who will be in the exterior door units in Buildings C and D, those are, the exterior doors are actually the most popular for consumers. They like the convenience of driving up directly to their unit, unloading their things, you know, putting them back into their car, whatever they're moving with. So it's, we actually do that in response to what the public asks for. As an internal policy, because we're trying to make this appeal particularly to women, to make them feel safe and comfortable in the project, there are certain types of businesses that we don't allow. We don't allow landscapers, we don't allow concrete companies, we don't allow folks who are doing construction-type activities to be using the units in this type project. Will we have businesses? Sure. There'll be businesses that store files, businesses that may have inventory that they want to store instead of in their retail location, things like that. But those are the type of businesses we work with.
And the reason I ask it is one of the things, you know, you only have that one entrance way in there. And if you have that type of activity, then you've got, you create yourself some, some traffic issues.
Yes, sir.
So, and, so that was the reason. I'm not against landscapers, I'm not against concrete haulers, whatever. It's just, you know, what the, the potential traffic might be if we had that type of clientele in there.
How many employees are you planning to have when this is up and running?
Upon full development, there will be three employees.
Yeah, at full capacity.
Two in the office and one full-time maintenance person.
Do you have living quarters?
Yeah.
There is none currently planned. It is allowed by the ordinance. But there has been a trend in the industry away from living quarters because we find we can hire better, more customer-focused related people if we don't require them to be, to live on-site, which is associated, it's more of a custodial-type environment. So we do not have plans at this time to have any onsite manager.
But will there be somebody onsite 24 hours a day?
We will be using guards for protection instead of managers, and we think guards are more appropriate than managers are.
What are the rental rates on the units, on other different sizes? It's a minimum to maximum?
Minimum, you'd think I could rattle that off the top of my head. The minimum will probably be around $90 a month for, it's actually be a little less than that, $75 a month for the smallest non-climate control unit, ranging up to, we have some very large climate-control units as large as 10 by 40, because those are very popular for people moving, particularly in an area like this. Those could range up into the high $300 a month. Those folks don't tend to keep them for very long.
Yeah.
They tend to move in and move out.
I have a, I have a question for Jennifer and possibly for Scott. The entrance that's showing right there to the subject site on the ortho map, is that the only entrance and exit point that you have for this project?
No, no, because they would also be able, the requirements for shared access and parking would allow you to be able to access the site through the shopping center off of Glen Lakes. And so the entrances that are available to the rear of the shopping center and to the front of the shopping center would also be able to access this property. And then they would be able to access it from the Murphy Express site as well because there's some, there's an entrance in the back of the building. And so all of that would remain open.
So, and, and this would be gated or?
Yes, we only have one gate into the project. So there's actually only one entrance into the secured area.
Yes.
That is where the gate is.
Right.
She's showing it.
Not sure what's going on there.
Is that?
No.
Okay.
We have a blackout.
So I guess, you know.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
That is me.
You're playing. You're just testing us.
I'll put it down.
No, but this is where the gate would be located for the secured part of the property. And then all of, this is the access road that passes by Murphy Express, the entrance into the shopping center.
So, where is the gas station?
This is the gas station.
Okay, there's a street, there's a pavement behind it.
Right. This is the pavement.
Okay, that's that. And then the other one that comes into that property, and then there's also one going out to Glen Lakes, right?
Right. And these two, this is the driveway that runs to the back of the shopping center.
Okay, so where is their gate?
Right here.
It's actually a little further to the back, Jennifer. It's.
And that, that was part of the reason why I asked that.
No, it's further back than that. There it is. The arrow is directly on the gate.
Right here.
So if you're coming from the back of that strip center, will you be able to run right into your gate or no?
Yeah.
Yes.
You would.
Well, you could turn and come to our access code pad and then go through the gate. But the gate's not in front of the drive behind the strip center.
Okay.
Mayor, I would like to move to approve the project.
All right, let's see. Already had Councilman Ellen Cat and Mayor Pro Tim White second it. We just had a long discussion. If their motion still stands.
I'm going to draw my line.
You withdraw your motion? You're going to make the motion?
Yes.
I'll maintain my second.
You maintain your second.
Out of all the places in Missouri City, this is probably the best location we have ever come up with for a storage facility.
By the way, any discount rate for senior citizens? Did you hear that? Discount rate for senior citizens. For senior citizens?
I'm just kidding. I have two units already.
We do have a marvelous referral program for any one in the city.
Thank you very much.
All right.
We got the way that we vote.
Any other question? Don't celebrate yet.
The council would be voting on the amendment to the material, the use of stucco for Building D as a primary material.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. There was a motion by Councilman Wynn and a second by Mayor Pro Tim White. There's no other discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, item 7B, public hearing.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, levying an assessment against Section 5 properties in the Lake Shore Harbor subdivision located in the City of Missouri City Public Improvement District Number 2, Lake Shore Harbor, and making certain findings related thereto.
Same item that the Development Authority discussed earlier?
Yes, sir.
And to give a brief synopsis, I'm sorry, this is not, y'all did that consent agenda, I should read my own writing. This is the second reading of the ordinance to establish assessments in Public Improvement District Number 2 for Section 5 of Lake Shore Harbor. The assessments will be 1,400 a year, which is the same as the assessment for Section 4.
Not 1,400. At 1,400.
1,400 this meeting, not 1,400. The developer is aware of the assessed amount. In discussions, as with Section 4, it is very unlikely that 1,400 a year assessment on each property will be sufficient to amortize their expenses of putting in the public improvements or the infrastructure that these are reimbursing the, the developer for. The way the assessments work, they're sent out with the tax bills, they are paid along with the taxes, they are not taxes, they are assessments. We collect them, we isolate the amount that we receive, and we use it to reimburse the developer.
Okay, is there a motion? It's a second reading.
Move to the, sorry, take.
Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion. Councilman Emery.
No, don't.
He was the first.
Oh.
Yeah. I, it goes in my ear. Made the second. All those in favor? Markston carries.
Thank you.
Item eight, our appointments, consideration of appointing members to the Animal Control Advisory Committee. Do they have to adopt a dog?
What qualification to be a?
You have to adopt, you have to adopt a dog to be on there.
Yeah, first you have to adopt a dog.
Right.
No, I'm just kidding.
To say that you understand the adoption process.
We tried that when we toured the animal shelter. The dogs turned us down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not all of us.
Factory started barking.
Yeah, yeah. You still got to go over and take the one off, the collar off that one.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, there are requirements for, on the board, and this is by state law, there must be at least one veterinarian, one county or municipal official, one person whose duties include the daily operation of the animal shelter, one representative from an animal welfare, welfare organization, but there is no limit to the number of members on the committee. We have had a five-member committee for several years, and the council appoints the committee or approves the committee every two years. And so we're up for our second commitment to this current committee that we have, and everyone's willing to serve again.
There, you might read out who those are for the general public, huh?
I, I was. The, we have Deb Cunningham, who is a licensed veterinarian. She's with the Paws, Claws &amp; All Vet Clinic on Cartwright. Ms. Sherri Ferguson, who is a representative from the animal welfare organization. Randy Troxel, who is our Assistant Director of Public Works, I'm sorry, Parks. And then we have Juan Osobeda, who's our Animal Control Superintendent. And then we have a, a city resident that is a member that we're recommending, and he's also been on the committee. His name is Ted Adderley. So we have five members that we are proposing for you to approve on the committee.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Counselor?
The approved. Second.
Councilman Wynn made the motion. Councilman Ellicat made the second. They're willing to serve. That's great. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 9, item 9A.
9A.
Consider authorizing renewal and execution of an amendment of the agreement for municipal court fines and fees collection services.
Mayor Council, on August 19th, the Long Reach Plan Committee Subcommittee of the Council met, and as you know, we had in place a contract that is currently with Linebarger. And what it calls for is review this year and determination whether to put it out for bid or to extend it for an additional year. We have representatives from Linebarger here tonight who presented to the subcommittee as Richard Hill and Brian Gross, and they have the information that they can go through with you with the, with regard to the benchmarks that they were to meet within the contract and with how they did perform. And Kathy Haney, Court Administrator, met with us, and she is here as well that can answer questions on the day-to-day operations with regard to this. The committee voted two to one to extend the contract for an additional year with the condition, two conditions to the existing contract to be changed, and that is, right now, for collections of fines and fees, they are collecting at 25% as a benchmark, and they asked that we raise it to 20, or 45%.
To what?
To 45%.
100%.
And the discussion at that time was that the rate of the collection was 41%, and they had been able to get it up to 43%, I believe is the number. And so they had asked for the 45%. And the other was that we make this the final year of the contract to terminate next year.
So, at the end of this year, it will go out for bid?
December 2014. Yes, sir. It would terminate and we would go out for bid prior to that.
Next year.
That was the recommendation from the committee.
At two to one vote. And.
And you, you made one that the standard is 25% that we established, but their performance is 41 to 43%.
Correct.
So they're well above, and it's, that gives some, hopefully some credence to why we're looking at a standard being much higher than 25, to get something that, you know, a higher benchmark. Higher benchmark, so. And my, my feeling would be that if, you know, if we go, if we would go out for a bid, that we had set that same standard for everyone. I mean, I don't think it's fair to say that we're sticking a standard of 45% on, on the existing vendor and not carry that same criterion requirement forward to any of the others that might be, if we would happen to go out to bid. But the 45 will be in place for this next year? Yes, that's, that was the, the recommendation of the, of the committee.
And the contract in your packet reflects those two changes.
I'll make a motion that we extend the contract for another year with those provisos of the new standard, 45%, and that the next year that we would in fact go out for, for bid. Was there any discussion about when that does happen, how long that bid is going to be for?
Let me, let me second that.
So they weren't, yeah, you're going to second that?
When you ask for the bid, are you asking for the contract term?
Let me second that.
No, I did not second it.
No, I thought you did. Who did?
No.
Did you?
I did, yeah. I thought.
Now, my question is, at the end of this year, when it is put out for bid, is it going to be every year? Is it going to be three years with renewals like this one is right now?
The committee discussed this, and I think one of the things that staff recommends is that you look at a three to five year, at least where you have a three-year contract with maybe two additional renewals built into it, so that you don't have, you're not coming back every 12 months going over this again and again. You kind of have, you've got your set term, and then at the end of the five years, you most definitely go out for RFP. If not, you don't feel the company is meeting its terms at the end of the third year.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that, that within a contract, that if, you know, while it may be a three-year contract or if, you know, that we'd look at it after every two years, that if they didn't meet the standards that we set, that that would trigger, you know, a revaluation of the, of the contract to, to go out for, or consider go out for, for bid. I mean, there's, to me, if you're going to set a standard and we're going to make the, the contract life two or three years, we want to make sure that we're, we're meeting those standards and not being, you know, locked into a, a sub-performance because the contract says it's for two or three years. But are you saying?
I have a question for you, Bill.
Have that built in the contract of where you can, you can terminate the contract if they're not meeting the terms.
Well, that's my concern. You know, I don't want to lay it out there for two or three years and give whoever gets this, two or three years to live up to the 45%. If we're going to put the 45% in place, it needs to be this year, this contract, and at the end of 12 months, if they're not there, then we're going to vote on it again.
Mayor.
I mean, that's my concern about throwing it out for two or three years. I want, I don't mind the contract. I want us to be able to review this thing on an annual basis, and if they're not there, we're going to make another decision. I don't want to wait two years to give them two years to build up to 45%.
Well, and you're able to get to the 45% because you've had them for terms as though they know our system, we know them, and you've been able to get there.
Then it.
You might not want to do initial one at 45% with whatever you're setting it for.
I would. I don't, if we change contracts, I expect a new person to be at 45%. I do, too. I mean, you know, we're going to place a standard on the existing folks.
Has to be the same for everybody.
They've got to be 25 or 45. It should be exactly the same for everyone.
That's right.
That's right.
That's right.
Let me weigh in a little bit. I was the, one of the vote that went two to one on the one. And Ed, I wanna correct you on something. The discussions that we had in that meeting was not about the new contract for next year. We were talking about the one for this year, whether to extend them or not, and then, or if not, go for a, you know, RSQ, and to see what we needed to do at that point. Those discussions were there. And then we also discussed the fact that they did forty-one percent, and the committee recommended, or put in a suggestion, to see what would happen to extend it to forty-five percent. That was a discussion that we had, whether whoever's coming on, the new one, or whether we're going for this or not. There, I don't recall any conversation taking place where we won't give it for three years or five years.
We did have that conversation. It was one to where we had the discussion about the annual twelve-month contract and the difficulties with that, and so the conversation that the three council members, myself and the other people in the room, we talked a bit about, you know, the next time we go out for a contract, not for this one with, as far as Linebarger, for their twelve-month renewal, that's the contract's bill, but if you go out for an RSQ about how you might wanna restructure your contract so that you don't, aren't put in the position of every twelve months, kind of as far as having to, council having this issue of, well, do you go back out or not?
Well, you know, I think one way to, to resolve that is, is that if, if we do extend this contract, prior to going out for another contract, we need to go out, we need to meet in time to determine what we're going to require before we go out. In other, in other words, we can't wait till the last minute to do it.
I agree.
Okay? And that pretty much takes care of it. By that time, we can figure out what, exactly what we wanna do and have it in that request for proposal at that time. But, you know, we're probably looking at three, more than three months from the contract end, and let's not wait to ninety days.
No, and that's the reason staff has brought this to you now. You'll have at your place to where we've built out the schedule and the calendar to where if, if you terminate the contract, you're at that point to where you can then move forward the RSQ process. You know, where this is, it's the beginning of September, we're asking you a contract that ends in, in December, because we don't wanna get stuck, you know, with however you're gonna be at that last moment.
And Ed, I think Councilmember Wyatt and Councilmember Wynn and I served on this committee when we discussed this a couple of different times, and you're right, it did come up every year. It came up every year about, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna extend it or not? And part of the reason why it comes up is, is because there were some concerns to see that if we had the best that's out there, what are we comparing to? We're talking about the standard rate is twenty-five percent, which, and now we're saying we collected forty-one percent. Now, the council committee just extended it to forty-five. So I guess part of the reason asking, and I, my thing was asking for RSQ was to see what is the standard rate that's out there, and if we're benchmarking ourselves, I mean, we're just calling forty-five percent, is it really forty-five, or is it less than forty-five? Or is it even higher than forty-five? And what is it out there? Are we comparing apple to apple? Or we only have one, one that's in front of us, and we, we said is, standard is twenty-five percent? That is why consistently this topic comes up every year. There's a discussion about whether we need to renew it or not. And I do agree with Councilmember Wyatt one hundred percent at the fact that, in the next one, we need to have this put in, probably more in place, to show that it's gonna be a forty-five percent, as what he was saying, if that's what the council wants, and if it's gonna be a two-year, or three-year, or five-year, and what, what have you. So those were the things that I was just, wanted to just basically point out.
Well, let me make sure, the twenty-five percent was established, as I understand it, by the council, that at the last time. So it's not something that's grabbed out of the air. It's a, it was a percentage that was agreed upon and voted in by the council. I'm not sure exactly when. I tell you, if they come in and they hit forty-five percent, it certainly courses the validity of the twenty-five percent. Well, and we established that. But, but what I'm basically saying is, sometimes that's how you get to what the real percentages are, is by going to... The only thing that I want to say in addition to is, is that we don't want staff to sit back because we're extending it for a year. I mean, one, one of the reasons why I pushed for the year was, the fact is, is that, you know, it takes a lot of staff changes to change contracts, and so we need to be prepared to change any time.
And Councilman, we have plenty of time given. If, if at this time you chose to, to do that, we have plenty of time this year in this current system to do that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we are prepared to do that.
Okay, I have a question, please.
Bill, let, let, let me... Finish one. I just wanna point out, Councilmember Wyatt, you made a good suggestion on the fact that we were doing twenty-five percent, and we hit forty-one percent, so we, that's also another part of the reason why I'm saying, then we elevated that to forty-five, because the vendor that we chose is hitting forty-one, and, and we're at twenty-five to see that now, is it really forty-five, or should we put fifty or fifty-five? That was a great point.
But that's the way you develop standards.
That's right. I totally agree. Go ahead, sorry.
How long has this company been with us, Linebarger?
The current contract came in place in two thousand eleven, and previous to that...
I would have to ask Kathy.
In total, accumulated, total?
February two thousand three.
Two thousand three.
And how many companies are there that have equal or similar qualification that may be capable of doing the job?
I would say maybe there's a three, three major vendors out there.
We sent out, in two thousand eleven, we sent out, I believe, to seven companies, and we got RSQs back from five. And we interviewed them and reviewed their RSQs, and brought that determination to council in two thousand eleven.
So their selection was based on a bid in two thousand eleven?
RSQ.
Okay.
When is the tax piece up?
That will be up, and will come, be coming to you in February, January, February timeframe, because it'll be up in, at the end of the year, or the end of the...
But is it gonna go out for bid this time?
Yes, sir. That's what you requested last year.
All right, so I just wanna make clear, the tax piece goes out for bid when?
February.
February of fourteen.
Yes, sir.
And, and this recommendation was being consistent with what we did with the tax piece.
Okay. So this one would go out for bid in December of fourteen, and then we would have them both?
Well, no, sir, it'll go out now. If you, if you...
No, if we renewed it as it was, it would come up in December fourteen, and then we would have both of them understood that they're always gonna be bid.
If that's what you choose, yes.
They're gonna, they're gonna prepare the, the documentation. It'll still come to us to decide that.
Well, I think that's probably...
How your contract is written would be...
I know, but I mean, that, that answers one of the problems that, that we've had for some time, Ed, is that...
If you, if you bid it out every year, you ultimately end it with nobody...
No, 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 not every year, Jerry. I'm just saying that when you...
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying that when, whatever you do, a two-year or three-year contract, we're just saying that going forward, those will not be renewed with extensions, they will be put out for bid.
It depends on the contract that the council approves. If the council approves a thirty-six-month contract or a forty-eight-month contract, and saying that there's no renewals afterwards, then yes, it goes out automatically for RSQs.
Okay, I just, I mean, that, that gets back to what Danny's talking about, what Robin's talking about. It puts it on a fair playing field for everybody, whether it's two, three, four, whatever minute it is. We should be...
Aren't you putting it on a fair playing field when you go out for bid?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, I mean, and we do that now, don't we? Don't we do that now? No, we haven't. In two thousand eleven, we did.
No, we extended it.
We extended it.
No, in two thousand eleven, you did go out for an RSQ.
Two thousand eleven, we went out. Mine, I wasn't here, so correct me.
We went out.
From the, from the firms that had put in proposals.
So it is on a level playing field when you go out for bid.
And if, and if I could, one thing that's part of the RSQ process is, what are your collection rates? And we take a look at the, at what all of them submit...
Right.
To, to see what the standard looks like.
Well, and, you know, and that's a very important part of it. None of these companies make any money off the city. They make all the money off of people who don't pay the city. And if they don't collect it, they don't make any money.
Their collection rate.
Okay? So there's no special interest in it other than what they, so the rate is very important in terms of how much we collect. Probably that should be our major focus.
So it's a charitable, charitable situation, that you're saying?
Oh. No, if they don't make any money, obviously they don't collect, we'll be looking for somebody else.
Yeah. I, I think what Jerry's saying is that I think all of them work very hard to collect every penny they can collect, just like us in the banking business, but some people just don't pay, and you have to file suit. They still don't pay. But if they're collecting, what we feel like is a fair amount, and that's, and that's the bar we set for them to do it, and again, it's, it's our responsibility up here, if we're gonna set that bar, to look at it, and I wanna look at it annually.
We should look at it annually.
If they're not making that bar, we're not gonna wait three years for the contract to be up. We're gonna make the change whenever we need to make the change. But I just wanna make sure that everybody's understanding that both of these pieces are now going to be thrown out on the table for other people to have an opportunity to bid on.
Well, the motion on the table is to renew the agreement for another twelve months.
For one year.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
We're just getting back to clarifying, at the end of this year, it is going to go out for bid.
At the end of this, when, this will be two thousand fourteen, and this one will we go out for RSQs.
And that this last year that it's in this contract, it's at forty-five percent.
Correct.
That's the piece. All right. There was a motion by Councilman Emery, I think.
State the motion, please.
The motion was to renew the current contract we have with Linebarger for one year, and set the bar at forty-five percent collection rate. That's the motion. And then I think the discussion is, is that prior to this coming up for renewal or whatever, we're going to get together and then, and three months out, or whenever it is, and decide what council wants to put in a new contract that we would be voting on in December of fourteen. Okay? Am I right? Am I right?
Correct. If you look at, yeah, the schedule that Bill has put together, I mean, it shows you as far as how, what the timeline would be, whether it's next year or this year, that kinda gives you the idea of the length and time that's needed for the RSQ process.
Okay. And the committee, two to one, recommended going with Linebarger, so that's what the motion is. An emotion...
What happened, it would decided not to renew?
If you decide to terminate the contract, what you'll see is, and that's where you get on the other side of it, then we move forward with the RSQ process and the timeline that's before you.
Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? And it goes out for contract, and goes out for bid. All right. Item nine B is to consider proposal on an ad valorem tax rate and consider setting the dates for public hearings and the adoption of such proposal on a future meeting agenda. You got that, what I gave you, Jerry? The reading?
Oh, hold on, wait a minute, here we go. Okay, I move that we, by record vote, place the proposed tax rate of point five seven three five seven on the October seventh, nineteenth, I mean, two thousand thirteen regular meeting agenda, seven P.M., and set public hearings on Thursday, September nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, at six P.M., and Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, at six P.M., to receive public comments on such proposal.
That's right. That's right, isn't it, huh?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Tell them, if you read it, it'd be right. So there was a proposal. So that's your motion?
That's the motion.
Is there a second? I think it's a second, guys. Don't sit here, huh? We'll be here a while. All right, Councilman Smith did. Got a motion by, may I approach them Wyatt, and a second by Councilman Smith. All those in favor? All opposed? Remember, you voted twice, Robin.
I know. No, I didn't, and I didn't have my hand up. I didn't have my hand up.
All right, so which one?
Opposed.
All right.
Can I, is it appropriate to take a poll on this, who voted?
What it, what it basically says is, says I move that we, by record vote, so that means each...
And that is a record vote. So, Danny?
Yea.
Yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea.
Yea?
Yea.
Robin?
Nay.
Alana?
Nay.
Okay. Five-two. It is approved. All right. Item ten ordinances are none. Item eleven are resolutions. Item eleven A is consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City nominating a candidate for a position on the Board of Directors of the Harris County Appraisal District. That person who we have voted on in the past has asked that we reappoint, I can't remember his name.
Yeah.
Yeah. Remember, this is for those people that live on the Harris County side, so, anyway. Our little old vote doesn't really make any difference, he wins it by Harris County, so is there a motion to appoint him, or to cast our votes and, for, for him?
So moved.
Y'all are quiet tonight. Second? Councilman Emery, they're going, I don't know what this is, but I, all those in favor? Motion carries. Uh, I, by the way, Steve's gone, I mean, yeah, Rich is gone. I know that the MUDs have nominated Albert Glover to serve on the C A D as their representative, so hopefully he gets, at my recommendation, hopefully he gets appointed to represent them.
On the Central Appraisal District?
Representing the MUDs.
I don't know if it's too late, but what kind of process can we, can we start to take consideration for the change to the sign ordinance that the gentleman talked about earlier? The political sign ordinance?
We can do it two ways. We can have council, we can bring it to council for a work session to get your comments and recommendations on, and then take it to planning and zoning, or we can just initiate it through planning and zoning and bring it up through council that way. You know, it's, it's a matter of timelines, I just add an additional meeting by bringing it to council first, but if council wants to discuss it, I can bring it to you on a work session. And I know that Caroline usually has her executive session piece that she usually, especially in relation to that part, that she wants to probably refer to, so we can, well, perhaps not for the first, the next meeting, but the first meeting in October.
Well, let me, I wanna take a look at the, at the ordinance, you know, in more, in more detail, before, you know, I suggest that we do that, but it seems on surface it has merit, so I'd like to, do something.
Are we through?
Are we off the camera?
Yeah.
I hope so. I just wanna know, Florida, what's going on?
Flash of passion.
We might need a camera. I missed part of it. I don't even know what I was saying.
That I've got, that I've got...
Frankie?
Sign ordinance.
Quite enough, so.
Well, that's great. What do we have to do to kind of...
This is how Stan does practice.
I don't know.